This special meeting of the Board of Trustees is hereby called to order at 6:51 PM. We are very pleased that you've taken time to join us this evening. We want to extend to each of you a sincere welcome from the entire school board. Thank you for your interest in Judson ISD. We have established a quorum, and I will call roll. Mr. LaFoyle?
Here.
Ms. Canoyer?
Present.
Mr. Macias?
Present.
Ms. Eaton?
Present.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Pichelle?
Present.
And I am Dr. Melinda Salinas. Thank you for coming this evening. To my left, we have Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Carl Montoya.
Present.
Ms. Holmes, do we have any citizens to be heard?
No.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item three, consideration of consent items. Please let me know if you'd like to have an item pulled. Three A, consider and take action regarding approving amendments to the budget for the 2018 fiscal year. Three B, consider and take action regarding approving entering into a temporary electric line right-of-way agreement with the City of San Antonio conveying a right-of-way easement for the service connection of electric transmission and distribution lines over, on, and across the district's property located on Lot 21, County Block 5053, Kitty Hawk Middle School, Bear County, Texas, and authorizing a signatory for the agreement. Three C, consider and take action regarding approving entering into an electric and gas lines right-of-way agreement with the City of San Antonio conveying a right-of-way easement for the distribution gas main pipelines, service connections, and electric transmission and distribution lines over, on, and across the district's property located on Lot 21, County Block 5053, Kitty Hawk Middle School, Bear County, Texas, and authorizing a signatory for the agreement. Three D, consider and take action regarding approving the ranking of the submittals for request for proposal 18-30, high school athletic concessions. Okay, we'll go ahead and first, let's mark ourselves present. Oh, Pool D, okay. If you'll please mark yourself present. Okay. Try now. We are voting on items three A and three B. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Oh, three A, B, and C, I apologize. Three A, B, and C. Motion, Ms. Canoyer? Second, Mr. LaFoyle. Motion carries seven to zero. Three D, consider and take action regarding approving the ranking of submittals for request for proposal 18-30, high school athletic concessions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Pichelle, second, Mr. LaFoyle, and Ms. Pichelle.
Thank you. Mr. Elizondo, I'd just like for you to talk to us about this particular RFP. I don't think we've had one of these come to us before.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am. We have brought these to the board before, just, I think the last time was four years ago, approximately four years ago. And it is the RFP for the concessionaire that runs the concessions. Of course, the biggest one that's the most visible are the concessions that are at the football games at the stadium. But they also do all the other athletic events that are related to high school, whether it's a basketball game or a baseball game. They run all of those concessions. I'm not exactly sure what kind of information if you-
Is it all sports?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I guess that's all. I just, I-
Ma'am.
I have a question. Who was on the committees?
The ranking.
The ranking committees?
Uh-huh.
Yes, ma'am. The individuals on the ranking committees were the athletic directors at each of the comprehensive high schools. Typically, the people who would run that are the athletic directors, but they were both named as key references on one of the vendors. So we moved that to the athletic directors or the athletic coordinators.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So the high school, are those the football coaches?
Yes, ma'am. The head football coaches.
From each of the high schools?
From Veterans, Wagner, and Judson.
And no other sports were included?
No, ma'am. Because the athletic coordinators at each of those campuses are supposed to represent all of the sports for those campuses. Yes, ma'am.
Don't we have female athletic coordinators at all the campuses?
We have female athletic coordinators, but the person responsible for the campus is the head football coach. At the district level, the athletic directors are at the same level. At the campus level, the athletic coordinator for the campus, the person in charge of the whole process, is the head football coach.
Just for the sake of consistency, thank you, Dr. Fields.
Yes, sir.
This process is, as I think Mr. Elizondo said, this is four years ago. So I imagine we would have done the same thing four years ago where we had the athletic directors involved and the coaches.
I believe the athletic directors were involved last time we did this. Correct?
Athletic director.
I'm just, you know, just looking for consistency in our process. So if that's what was done four years ago, if we need to adjust it, or at least we know where we're starting from. So it hasn't been a changing process.
Point of clarification, Mr. Macias. I would say that there has been a change. Last time, it was the athletic directors, which would have been Mr. Miller, Candy Tanner. This time, it was the athletic coordinators at each of the comprehensive high schools because the two references, the top references for one of the vendors was Mike Miller and Mr. Dupree. So rather than have them rank on one where they were the key references, we had the next level in athletics step up, which are the athletic coordinators for each of the high school campuses, and they performed the right.
That makes sense.
Yes, sir.
I think I've asked before, procurement's always been sort of interesting for me to have a process. But my thing is, is this in writing? Do we have a policy that outlines that this is the procedure when these things happen? Not to say that that's incorrect, I think that's actually probably more than appropriate. But are there processes that will say this is A, B, or C, or D?
No, sir. We don't. We've discussed it since the last time you brought it up, and we're working on something with purchasing to develop that. What typically, as I mentioned last time, what happens is whatever department, whatever area requests the request for proposal, it goes back to them to evaluate it because they're the experts in that area. So if it was a maintenance item, maintenance would receive it. If it was facilities planning, they would receive it. If it was me, I would receive it. But we're going to try to document something so that when, next time we're asked, we can say, yes, we do have it in writing, and this is kind of the way it's laid out.
I always think it's appropriate to have a process. So anyway, thank you.
Okay, if there's no further questions, we'll proceed to vote. Motion carries seven, zero. Move on to item discussion and consideration of action items. Four A, consider and take possible action regarding approval of the proposed budget for the 2019 fiscal year.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Macias, second by Ms. Canoyer. Dr. Montoya.
This is the actual process to begin to work through the passage of the bond, I'm sorry, the budget for next school year for the district. So, Mr. Elizondo, if you want to share other ideas here.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. David, I'm going to need the screen, please. Okay, here we go. So as I mentioned a little during the public hearing portion of it, we have been discussing this budget for quite a, I guess, maybe since February or March. And this is probably the sixth time that we've looked at the budget. And this presentation is very similar to the one we did at the last meeting, last week, actually, the 19th. So I'm not going to go into it with a lot of detail unless y'all tell me otherwise. I'm just going to review just the key numbers and also tell you about some of the changes that we made based on the feedback that we received from the board last week. So I'm going to just hit the, there's not very many, well, actually, there's a lot of slides on here, but I'm only going to cover a few of the slides. So on this particular slide, one of the numbers that we changed has to do with the estimated ADA. I mentioned at the meeting on the 19th that we had just received the final ADA numbers for the 16, no, for the 17, 18 school year, which is the current school year. And so once we receive those, and I can better predict what we're going to have next year, so as y'all knew before, we were using the same number, the 21,00305, so we increased that number to 21,0388, which was the final, which is also the final ADA for this school year, for 2017, 18. So that helped generate more funding for both this current year and also for next year. Again, I'm going to just go through the things that I changed, and if y'all need more discussion, please let me know. Again, we are just proposing that we stay with the dollar-for-tax rate, so it's going to be the same tax rate that we've had before. On the local revenue side, it's, again, it's pretty much the same numbers that we had last time. We didn't make, we made a few little adjustments here, but not very many. You have the information in Board Book. If y'all made any notes or have any comments, please stop me as we're going through them, and I'll be happy to address them. But we're looking at local revenues, again, at about $100 million, as I mentioned a minute ago in the public hearing. On the state revenue portion, this did change from the 19th again because of that ADA count. So now we're up to $75.3 million. And for total state revenue, when you include that TRS on behalf, we're at that $84 million level. On the federal side, we have Impact Aid, which I've mentioned to y'all before because we have students that are from parents that are federally impacted, whether they're working on a military base, for the postal service, any kind of federal connection. We receive about $150,000 per year, or that's what we're estimating for this next year. And for the SHARs and grants and ROTC, the biggest part there happens to do, again, with that SHARs, which stands for School Health and Related Services, which is a reimbursement program that the federal government has in place for students. And when we provide, again, special, typically, they're specialized students with special speech therapy, occupational therapy, those kinds of things. So they reimburse us for our expenditures for those types of services. There is nothing for other resources. This past year, it was at $4.4 million that we received from the bond loan that we had done for Veterans Memorial, but we don't have that coming this next year. On the expenditure side, for the general operating fund, again, the largest expenditure here is at $159.5 million. On the staff, I'm going to just mention real quickly here, on the staff and upgrades, at the last meeting, we had some positions that some of the board members had some concerns about because we were going to hold some positions like technology aides and maybe some ISS aides, but mostly it was the technology aides and maybe some other ones in there as well. So we went back and adjusted some of those numbers and removed some of those positions from the list. I will reassure you that even though if we have already identified positions that we're going to hold, or if we have some that we're going to hold in the future, if the administration at that campus comes to visit with us and says, there's no way we can operate like this for reason X, Y, Z, and if it is, we determine it should be a valid reason, and the superintendent tells us, yes, go ahead and hire that position, then we will do that. And we will continue to adjust as we go forward and keep a tally of what we're adjusting so we have a good idea at the end of the year when we start the budget process again next year, where, what our starting point is and kind of where we're at with those positions. And we'll have a list of them. That's the main thing that changed here. On the operating cost, I did adjust. Also, I'm going to tell you all this so that if y'all don't like it, y'all can discuss it, and we can change it. On the, after hearing the discussion at the last meeting, I had adjusted the board travel by $1,500. And after the board discussed it, and my feeling was that when we left the meeting, y'all were more comfortable with $1,000, so I only changed it by $1,000 instead of the $1,500. So if y'all have any issue with that, please say so, and we can discuss it some more. Y'all can discuss it and tell me whatever y'all want that budget to be. So Betty, correct me, it was at five, now it's at four?
Yes.
So it was at $5,000, and now it's at $4,000 for each, per board member for travel for next year. On the, as a summary, for the general operating fund, the revenue is at $187.6 million. The expenditures are $197 million. We have a deficit of $9.5 million. Now, I'm going to just talk about that for a minute because I don't, again, I know I'm just beating the dead horse, but $9.5 million, just please keep that in mind as I share the following numbers with you because it's going to look a little bit better for this next year. But next year, that's where you're going to, that's actually next year, based on my estimates, that 9.5 is going to be closer to 13 to 15 million dollar range, once, based on everything, the funding formulas for the state being the same as they are right now. Now, of course, we're anticipating they're going to make some adjustments. What those are, we don't know yet. But if everything were to stay the same, and we just had a little bit of a property value increase of 3%, then you would be at about 13 to 15 million dollars next year. Now, again, if we have more students show up, better ADA, all those types of things, then we can definitely improve that number without doing very much of anything other than just having students show up. So we want to make sure that they stay here and don't go anywhere. So how are we going to resolve that $9.5 million for this coming year? There are several ways. We have, the state gives us funding for certain mandated programs like special education, the GTE program, bilingual program, comp ed. And we have a reserve restricted fund balance for mandated programs specifically for comprehensive education funding that is close to $5 million. So we're going to use $2 million of that. In this budget, there are $2 million with the specific comp ed expenditures that we're using that for. So it is being used for the purpose which the state intends us to use it for. So that's going to help with that $9.5 million by reducing it by $2 million. We're going to pump that in as a revenue for this next year. We're also going to use, just for everybody's, for clarity for everybody, we sold bonds to repair roofs on some of our facilities. The voters approved the bonds. During that, a month before, during that timeframe, we also had a hailstorm that damaged those same roofs we were already going to fix with those bonds. And so we visited with the attorneys, and they said, definitely, you can use the bond money to continue to fix those roofs. And the hail, the money you're receiving from the insurance company, you can keep that in your general operating fund and use it for any legal purpose. And so we're going to, for right now, we're at $4 million. And so that's going to help us this next year to pay for that deficit of 9.5 million, which brings us to a new deficit for next year of $3.5 million. And we're also, as y'all are aware, still working on some items with the insurance company. So once we're done working with them, we're forecasting that that $3.5 million will, should be a wash when we're done. But right now, please, when you adopt this budget, because that's not a done deal, go into it with the mindset that you're adopting it at a $9.5 million deficit, and we're using these other funding sources, and we're going to end up with $3.5 million coming out of fund balance to pay for that at this point in time. So with that being the scenario, at the end of next school year, we anticipate our fund balance to be at that $40.1 million. Of course, we always try to improve that as the year progresses and try to make sure that everybody, you know, try to hold everybody as much as we can to spending only what's necessary. So we'll hopefully improve on that, but just, that's the number that we're going to present to the board. Okay? I'm going to move on to the next slide. Anybody else have questions?
I have a question, Mr. Elizondo.
Yes, sir.
Just because you're, we're on the topic, and it's relevant. If we see enrollment numbers decline, we'll know by October what our enrollment looks like for the next year, correct?
You won't know 100%, but you do start getting a trend. In October, when we do our PIM snapshot data, we'll look to see what our enrollment is doing. And actually, we'll know as soon as, you know, the kids, when we open school, within, by the second, by after Labor Day, we already know because we know that we're starting to balance the load of our teachers, and we know whether we have more students than we anticipated or less. So we already have an idea at that point. But you're right, as the year progresses a little bit more, by October, by the end of October, we'll definitely have a better idea. And it's a little bit, what typically happens in our district, and I don't know if this is every district or just our district, is that the secondary students, the high school students, after January, they start to drop off a little bit. They leave, it's something, they, you know, do different things. But our elementary population starts to increase during that time. So it kind of offsets each other, and the state doesn't pay you for, they do a little bit difference. But for a high school student versus an elementary kid, to them, ADA is ADA. And so as long as we can maintain that number, it doesn't really matter what grade span it is, for funding purposes, it's the same. Like I said, we do receive a little bit of money for high school students for some special things that they do. But yes, we will have an idea, and we do monitor that. Every six weeks, we get reports, and we look at them and determine, okay, are we, is it looking good, or are we getting in a worse situation? So that we know that we need to put the brakes on even stronger, if harder, if it's looking like we're losing more kids. But you don't really know the true, true number until the end of the school year, when everything's wrapped up and everybody does all their adjustments, and we know kind of, we know exactly where we're at.
The average daily attendance rate, I think you have it at 94.60. What has been our average, say, the last two years?
Last year, it was right at, right beneath 95%. It was like 94 point, I, I'm kind of going to say that because I've seen two different numbers, but when, they were close, like 94.8 and then 94 point, quite, not quite nine in that range. So it's right in that little frame. This year, it's pretty close to the number we have here, 94.6. And a few years ago, that 94.6 was really a safe number. It was a conservative number. And now it's become more reality, which is not good because that means we're having more students missing on a daily basis. So if we could definitely find a way to improve that, it would definitely help with the funding from the state that the district would receive. But that 94.6 that we're looking at, that's what we're really in actuality having right now.
I think this is the first time I've heard that it's not as conservative as you've had it in the past.
Mm-hmm.
So it's pretty dead-on right now.
It's pretty close.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, I'm going to go on to the next slide, and we're going to change funds now. This is general operating fund. The next one we're going to talk about is child nutrition. And if y'all have any questions about general operating fund, please, you can ask me at any time, but I'm going to go to this next one. This is about, again, this is the fund that we use to pay for all of our food service expenditures. So anytime for all the meals that we prepare and serve to our students, whether it's breakfast, lunch, any snacks, this is where it's coming from, this particular fund. And that's the only thing we can use this fund for are those particular types of expenditures. So again, just hitting some of the highlight numbers in local revenue in that 2018, 2019 budget column, we have about $2.1 million. Again, those are the students that pay full-price lunch, or they're on the reduced pricing. And of course, staff that purchase items from the kitchens as well, they contribute to that number. The state revenue is about $213,000. The larger part of that is a summer feeding program that we're doing right now that they reimburse us for. And the largest one, of course, being the federal government for their, and it's broken down here, it tells you for the lunch, we estimate about $7.3 million, and for breakfast, about $2.5. And commodities are all those items that they give us, but we're required to account for them. It's not really money that comes into us. It's more the value of either ground beef or things like that that they provide us to be able to prepare meals for the students in lieu of giving us cash. So for the fund as a whole, we're at about $13 million on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, the labor is about $5.4 million, and that's including all their benefits. And the operations, which are, again, the food costs being the major component there, is about $7.7 million. And as I mentioned in the past, the district does really well in maintaining the labor cost. There are a lot of districts that I'm, that I know of that pay almost equal their labor, and their operating are almost equal, and some I've seen that are, their labor are even higher than their operating costs. And you'll see that there's been a pretty significant increase there, and that's because this past year, or this current year, the board authorized a nice adjustment for those employees to get them to a more market rate for their labor. So we're, the fund's doing well, and I think the employees are happier now that they're making more market rate. So the total expenses are at $13.2 million. So as a summary for that fund, you can see that we're going to be in a deficit of about $193,000. And if y'all recall as well, I think in the last meeting, we just approved a 10-cent price increase for meals because we were required to. So that's going to definitely help offset that $193,000, and it'll probably contribute more to the fund balance. But for next school year, ending the school year, we're looking at about $1.2 to $1.3 million in fund balance for that fund. The next, yes, ma'am, Ms. Pichelle.
Before you move on, Dr. Salinas was just telling me that you talked to us about this milk settlement suit last year and gone over my head.
Sure. Years ago, I don't know, gosh, I don't even remember the whole story anymore, but years, and this has been many, many years ago, on the, where we had that milk settlement suit line, $73,000. There was something that, and I don't even remember the whole story anymore, but there was some kind of price, I don't want to say rigging, but something going on in the market with, they were arranging pricing, and the state got involved and sued. And so every year, we receive about $60,000 to $70,000 in this settlement suit revenue. It isn't very much money, but hey, we'll take it because it's $73,000. It's good. I don't know. I really don't know, I really never have looked into it because it's not a major part of the budget, so it doesn't really concern me too much. But I'll do a little more research, and I'll get y'all some more research, just to know, just to have the information. You bet. Okay, so I'm going to jump now to the next fund, which is the debt service fund. And this fund is, again, the one that I call, we're paying our mortgage for our, for our bonds, for all of our buildings. So as we sell bonds, all the people lend us the money. They want to get paid back their money, both in principal and interest. And this is the fund where we generate the money to be able to do that. So again, the major funding source here are our local taxpayers. We receive about $37 million in taxes from our local taxpayers to pay back those loans, those bonds. And then we also receive some money from the state, at about $684,000. So for, in total, for next year, it's about $37.6 million or $37.7 million. And on the expense side, it's about the same amount of money. You can see that our principal payments for next year are about $11.3 million, and interest on those bonds are about $26.7 million. And it's not on those $11 million of the bonds, it's on our, on our total outstanding debt, which we have. And that $10,000 is what we pay in some fees for the folks that pay, make all those payments out to everybody that we, that they charge us to do that. As, in summary, for that fund, you can see that the revenues and expenditures are balanced just about with a negative $301,000. We have, as you can tell, a way sufficient fund balance to take care of that, which is not really that 25 million, but it's about $12.6 million, but still more than enough. The rating agencies are very happy when they see that you have that kind of a fund balance in that fund, so we're doing well there. Now, some of the things that we discussed at the last meeting, and the board helped us with some input on, that we're going to pull back on, but we wanted to make sure that y'all were aware of it so you didn't, you don't think, well, what did they end up doing with that? So we talked a little bit about the master's degree stipend at the last meeting and changing the way that we currently pay the master's degree stipend. And there was a comment about, from one of the board members requesting that we hold off on doing that a little bit until we bring more information to the board so that everybody can understand it a little bit better. And it's not a big savings for us annually, at least we don't think it is. It will, over time, be a big savings, but I think Mr. Garcia estimated it last time at around $30,000 a year, based on what our normal turnover of staff are. So we'll bring that, it's not our intent not to try to implement that, but we'll bring some more information throughout the year for the next school year so that the board can give us some guidance as to whether that's okay to do or if you still don't feel comfortable doing it. Because everybody, I mean, there are some very good points brought up about continuing to pay that as it is now. The next item has to do with the elementary schools and the assistant principals. And we talked about sharing because the student population was below 500, 500 students at these campuses. And based on board input, we've, and looking at how we're currently staffed at those schools, the only school, schools that are going to be sharing for next school year at this point are going to be Coronado Village and Wortham Elementary School because they're the only ones that have very small student populations. Now, if during, once the year starts, if we see that they're having an issue for whatever reason, then we'll look at maybe putting a temporary, one there for a certain amount of time to help out when they're, when they have needs at one of those schools. And it wouldn't be Wortham, it probably would be at Coronado, but we'll kind of evaluate that as the year goes on. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of that. We are going to do, as the board suggested, and, because it wasn't a vote, and keep assistant principal at each one of those elementary schools. And y'all are right in that not all of those elementary schools, but some of those will be growing, and within a year or two, they're going to be over the 500 anyway, which is what we're hoping for several reasons. So on this next slide, we also talked about the travel policy for the employees. And there was a suggestion made as well about that one, still, we're still saying no out-of-state travel for employees. There's only going to be one conference per employee, and the only change here has to do with the mileage that we had originally said, we're going to pay for the hotel registration, but no meals, no mileage. So what we're only, what we, based on the suggestions from the board, we're gonna pay for the hotel registration and mileage, still no meals on that one away conference. And for Region Twenty, we're gonna pay for the registration, but we're not gonna pay for mileage, we're going to Region Twenty, because it is so close by. Now, that is all that I was gonna present tonight. Now, in the board book, we sent you listings of all the positions for every one of the schools that we've been discussing for the past few meetings. If y'all liked, I have them in the PowerPoint, I think, yeah, I think they're here, yes, they are here. If y'all need me to go through them, I will be happy to do that, or if you have specific questions. But the only slide that there were really changes on had to do with the hold hires, and it was more with the comments that were made about the technology aids, you know, can, can we really afford to remove them? And so after the board made some comments, and we went back and took those off the list, and said, okay, we're gonna remove them off the list, and we'll work with the schools throughout the year. And if we can, again, as I said a little while ago, if a principal comes to us and, and gives us a good reason for needing a position that we're holding on, then we will work with them to get them either a permanent or a temporary one, to help them during their peak need times. Or, and we'll continue to identify the positions that we can hold off on. But any questions on the staffing that y'all would like for me to review, that y'all marked anywhere? And then the slides after the staffing are the campus and department budgets that we reviewed. There were, I don't think, any cha, we changed the board budget, like I said a little while ago, from fifteen hundred, you know, from five thousand to four thousand instead of thirty-five hundred dollars. And there may have been another minor change, but nothing, nothing really major. Yes, ma'am, is there a question? Yes, ma'am.
On page fifty-one?
Yes, ma'am.
What, for special education?
Yes, ma'am, that, that's a parent liaison position that has been vacant for quite some time. And so since the special education department has operated without it, we're gonna see how much longer we can go.
Okay, but what, what do they do, though?
The parent liaison is, acts as just that, it's a, it's a clerical position, it's a paraprofessional position, that works with parents and communicates and helps all of that. But there's so much of that going on at the campus level with principals and teachers, the people that are on the ground, so to speak. The parent liaison is a little bit more of a kind of community relationships and things like that. It's not specific instances of where communications need to occur, that occurs at the campus level.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lizondo, can you go back to the first slide where we looked at fund balance?
For the general operating fund?
General operating, yes, sir. So I know last year when we did the raise and we did a retention incentive, you were, you let us know that we were gonna be nine million dollars, that we were gonna start with a nine million dollar deficit of this year, or end with a nine million dollar deficit, and then start with one.
Yes, ma'am.
And so you were spot on. And so if I'm reading this correctly, and I know you don't want us to act like it's gonna be a balanced budget, but it could potentially be a balanced budget.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then I know that Northeast dealt with the same issue?
Yes.
Severe deficit, I think they looked at a one percent raise and a one percent retention?
Yes, ma'am.
Incentive? And I don't even know if we would consider it as a board, certainly, I don't think a raise, but a retention incentive, because a raise, the scary thing about a raise is that we have to sustain it, and we don't know what's happening with the state. But after this, after we vote on this, and then potentially, I think last year we did it a month after or two months after, is there a possibility that you could give us numbers of maybe a retention incentive?
Sure, yes, I could.
And do you know approximately how much that would be, or not?
Sure, well, I can tell you that last year, the retention incentive, or the, you know, this current year, we, that the board approved was six hundred and twenty-five dollars per employee, and we budgeted one point eight million dollars for that expenditure. And that's what it, and it was a little bit lower than that because we had, we did have some employees that left, but we budgeted based on the number of employees that were here at the time we did it. So if you're looking at approximately that amount of money, six hundred and twenty-five dollars, and you're looking at approximately one point eight million dollars. And if the board wanted to contemplate doing something like that for next year, I would ask that y'all would amend the, the amount in here, or say that you're amending it to include that, so we would add it. And then next month, we could come back with the plan of who's eligible and all that stuff. So at least the money has already been allocated before fiscal year begins. So because depending on how we write it, we don't, if it's effective with people that have worked on July first, we don't want anybody to come back and saying, well, you did this after the fact. So if at least the money has been included in the budget with the intent of saying, we're gonna do a retention incentive, and we will bring the plan forward next month, then it will be, it, it will be better than if we didn't have anything in there at all, any money in the budget.
Okay.
And I will tell you that, that is what you said just is correct. Northeast adopted their budget, they approved a one percent on the midpoint pay increase for their employees, and they also did the one percent incentive, retention incentive. And I think for teachers, it's, I think it was like five hundred and fifty, five hundred and fifty-two dollars, what it, is what it ended up being for a teacher. They do it a little bit different because they do it based, they do everything based on their midpoint, so everybody's gonna get a different retention amount. But the teachers, which is the largest group for them and for us, it was about five hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Any other thoughts from any board members about that? Ms. Knoyer?
I know that our teachers will get a small increase based on years of experience as they move forward. We're not freezing pay, is that correct?
No, ma'am. What we, when we don't provide a, a pay increase, we don't do, we don't give anybody an increase, period, not even, not a step, nothing. It is frozen where they're currently at, and no one gets anything.
So then, in that case, and this is something that I'm definitely in favor of, it's very difficult to ask our, our staff to not have any chance of a slight pay increase to, to repay them for the loyalty and the hard work that they put in. So I'm, I'm thinking this is something we should consider.
Anybody else? Mr. Macias?
This should have been brought up earlier. I do support the idea in principle, but bringing it up now, eleventh hour before our budget? Anyway, my, my whole point with retention is that it's used to retain employees. So I need to know that we're retaining employees, that we didn't lose employees between not mentioning this two months ago versus where we are now. I think the idea was great last year. I hate copycatting, but Northeast was in a very bad situation according to the press, and, and all of a sudden, they're, they're not, and they're in a position to provide some sort of incentive and a raise. I do believe that we need to be strategic in our process of giving incentives, and not be totally reactionary. Next year, with nine point five or thirteen million dollars in terms of deficit, I'm thinking we're, we're in a tough spot. So, and it's funny, because last year, Dr. Salinas, I think, said the same thing about maybe we should wait. I might be misquoting yourself, I'm wrong. I might be wrong, yeah. But it's interesting. So naturally, if, what you're saying is we need to approve that expenditure now, when we pass the budget, so you can come back and give us an idea of what that looks like?
It would be best to put it in the, in the budget. Now, if you, if somebody makes a motion, amends it, adds it in here, and for some reason, y'all decide next month that you don't wanna do it, and you don't wanna approve the plan, then the money just sits there, and we, or we can go back and amend the budget and take the money back out of the budget. And just, so, is that kind of clear?
Yeah, yeah.
And just to, to address, and, and I'm not trying to, by any means, pick on Northeast, because I think they're a great school district as well. They adopted their budget with a pretty significant deficit, like I think it was twenty-three million dollars, I think. But they just like, were trying to, said, you know, they're trying to do something for their employees, and they, they put, they advert, they put, they published that, just as we were doing that four million dollars for the hailstorm, they had a similar situation. And I think they ended up with seven million dollars left. And there is another source that they're getting from the state, some accumulation of like eight point five million dollars. Again, they're kind of doing what we're doing, they're, we're finding these little Band-Aids to try to help this problem, because we don't wanna go raise taxes on our taxpayers. But they, I just wanted to make sure that we're aware of that. Unfortunately, their problem hasn't gone away, just like our problem hasn't gone away. We're all gonna continue to deal with these issues as we move forward. And, and I'm sorry, and just one thing, the only other thing to keep in mind, which I'm gonna be sharing with y'all in a minute, it was in board book as well, has to do with the health insurance for our employees. And there, and last meeting, I shared a little bit with you about the health insurance, and when we went back to review the rates, the five percent increase was only applied to the, and I'm sorry, I'm kind of getting out of, it's kind of budget related, but it's kind of, I know, I'm kind of getting out of, but it's, yes, it is gonna have an impact on the employees, because the five percent calculation was only based on the employee portion, and not, it wasn't based on the entire, like, district portion included. So when I showed you the information and it said the employees, the largest group in the particular insurance they purchased, was gonna have a five dollar per month increase. When we went back to look at it and said, oh, but what about the district contribution portion of it, that's not being included in here, that increase really is twenty dollars a month instead of five dollars a month. And so although I see where the budget is, if the board felt like they wanted to help with that, I mean, that would help offset that as well, if y'all wanted to help offset the increase in the health insurance by give, by doing a retention incentive for those people. But that's up to you, I mean, that's, employees can use it for whatever they want. But I know it's kind of mixing apples and oranges, but just kind of, to kind of put that out there.
No, actually, it was a very timely comment that you made, because that was my other struggle in terms of having to look at our employees now having a deficit, based on their total net income, because of the increase of insurance. And when we got to that part of the agenda, I would have talked more about it, but this is timely, and obviously relevant to this discussion. So the six twenty-five incentive, or the one point eight, if we're looking at six twenty-five, then would more than cover that, because after taxes, I'm trying to figure out what the net was last year for employees, was it like four or five hundred?
We ended up, I remember I told y'all the wrong number last year.
Yeah.
I did the math wrong, and I was like, oh. What ended up happening is originally, when we do a payment, a sub, what they call supplemental payment to an employee, you have to do a twenty-two percent flat tax. But when you include it with their regular paycheck, then you don't have to do that. You just pay whatever tax rate that's applicable to each individual employee. So when we looked at how it was gonna impact our employees, we found it to be more advantageous to just apply their regular tax rate for each individual employee. So if we had somebody who was on a lower bracket because they're a lower wage earner, then they were gonna be able to keep a little bit more money than if we applied the flat twenty-two percent. So that's what we did. So I'm, I can't tell you now like I did last year, it's gonna be this much, because we're not gonna do it that way. We would go back and do it applying their individual tax rate, so that they can get the benefit of being able to take more money home.
And just so I'm clear, what would be the timeline again? If we're gonna use this incentive, employees that were employed as of six thirty and stay employed as seven one, or what does that look like?
Well, we can, and that's kind of the thing, I said, if we can write the plan for next month, because I, I'll tell, I can tell you what Northeast did, and I can tell you what we did last, last year. The only thing is that I don't remember the exact month. I just know that if you were employed between month X and Y in our district, and it carried from one school year to the next, then you were eligible to get the money, and you got it in December, that, in that paycheck. Northeast does it a little bit different. They say, like, if you're, and the only reason I know this is because I read it today, if you're hired as of October the first of this year, and you finish the fall semester, then you will get half of the retention incentive in January. And if you fit, go through and finish the second semester, which is the spring semester, then you will get the other half either in June or July. The idea in their mind, I think, is to make sure that the employees stay to be able to receive, you know, they have to stay for the fall, full fall semester, and then if they want the other half, then they have to stay through the entire spring semester as well to be able to get that. We don't have to do the same thing, but that's just the way that they're handling it. We can write it a myriad of different manners. We can say, you know, if we want to impact the majority of employees, I just have to check a couple of things with legal to make sure we're okay. But we can say, okay, would they, if they start this school year and stay here through period X, then they're gonna get the money. Because if we're looking at, like you said a little while ago, maybe it's not as effective if we're looking at carrying it from one year to the next, because we didn't tell people early enough to say, hey, if you were here in March of last school year, and you stay with us through, I don't know, November of next school year, then you're gonna be entitled to this money. They weren't aware of that, so they left. And it just depends, I'm, I'm just not sure how, if that would have had a significant impact or not.
Well, like I said, I was a little bothered by that, I think being strategic is always good. But in this case, there are other factors involved, and namely, the insurance, in my mind, is one that needs to be offset. So I'll, I'll yield, thank you for your input.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question. How did we land on the six hundred twenty-five dollars last year? Like, you were saying Northeast did like a one percent retention bonus.
We just proposed some arbitrary, we just really selected like three different amounts, and said, okay, this one's gonna cost, you know, two point five or three million dollars, this one's gonna cost X amount of money, and we said, okay, this is, sounds like the one. And, and I get why, why Northeast is doing theirs, but I would recommend that we please don't do it that way, because it, just for the administration portion of it, it becomes more difficult when you're trying to figure out all the midpoints for every group and try to, it, it's just easier to just pick an amount and say this is. And truthfully, what happens when you do that, our lower wage earners get a nicer benefit that way, because otherwise, they wouldn't get that much money.
So I guess my question is, I, had I heard time reading some of, all of the figures in the board book this time? So what is, what is the amount that most employees will have to, like, chip in for their insurance this year, that they didn't, like, what's the amount increase?
The largest group? It's like, it's like between twenty and twenty-three dollars per month.
Per month, okay. So like, if we did a five hundred dollar, five hundred fifty dollar in retention incentive, that would more cover it, basically?
It would help offset additional costs that they would have. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. How would, we would have to amend it, right?
When, so somebody has a motion, so somebody would want to, if somebody wanted to do this, they would amend the motion to say, we want to increase the expenditures by one point, if, I'm throwing a number out here, okay, by one hundred, one point eight million dollars, to be, for a retention incentive plan that will be adopted in July. Or you can just leave it open to just say retention incentive program, and we'll bring it back in July.
Who motioned this, you did?
Well, I, I just, I just brought it up for discussion. I did not do the original motion for this item.
Anyone can amend it.
For the budget? You did, so. Somebody want to amend the motion?
Ms. Knoyer?
I move that we amend the current, current motion to adopt the budget, including a one point eight million dollar amount that will be considered as a retention incentive for a plan that will be adopted in July.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Knoyer, second by Mr. Macias. Right now, we're only voting on the amended, on the amendment, correct. Okay, the amendment passes seven zero. And now we will vote again now on the amended motion. This is to consider and take possible action, yes, regarding approval of the proposed budget, but to increase the expenditures by one point eight million for, to be considered for a retention incentive or retention plan, that would not be then voted on until July.
So just for clarity, this isn't for the whole budget item, is it?
Yes, it's been amended already, and so now we're voting on the amended budget with the increased expenditure.
I had some more questions about the budget, I wasn't ready to close it out. They're real simple, so let me just ask them.
Go right ahead, we won't.
Since I have the floor. The day study that we talked about last budget, is that something that we will get a report on later, is it continuing to be updated, and just want a timeline for that?
We're awaiting Gibson's analysis for that as well, so.
So Gibson will be part of that, that's that information you provided us last time?
The, the information I provided is our own analysis from Tazby. I understand Gibson's also gonna do their own analysis as well.
Okay, so we'll see something in August then regarding that.
That's the time, and however, in our latest meeting with Gibson, it's possible that their present, presentation to the board may actually happen in September.
Okay.
So.
Now, just to be clear, there are no reduction of days for anybody in this budget?
Sure, yeah, I'm, I'm real clear on that, yeah.
That we're gonna be working on. That we're going to be working on throughout the year?
Yes.
To plan for the next school, next budget year after this?
That's my expectation. I just want to make sure that doesn't just fall out.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I had.
You'll proceed to vote. Okay, motion, amended motion carries 7 to 0. We'll move on to item 4B, consider and take possible action regarding approval of the proposed compensation plan for the 2018, 2019 fiscal year. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Pichelle, second, Ms. Eaton. Dr. Montoya.
Again, this is a proposed piece, and this is Mr. Marco Garcia from HR.
Yes, this is the compensation plan for 2018, 19 that we are requesting approval for. The only changes have been minor to some verbiage in some areas to make it a little bit easier to understand. The only major change is that there would be no salary increase for any employees.
If there's no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. Oh, sorry. Might help, okay. Motion carries 7-0. We'll move on to item 4C, consider and take possible action regarding approval for extending the employee group health insurance benefits with United Health for the 2019 planned year. Do I have a motion? Motion, Ms. Pichelle, second, Ms. Eaton. I'll move on to discussion.
I was just trying to figure out, now, you know, the 5% increase. You, you were, I want to make sure I understand what you said. You said that the, you did the calculation for what, how it will affect the teachers, right? Their pay?
Yes, ma'am. What, I'm sorry.
We still have to do the calculation on our portion?
At the last budget meeting on the 19th, I presented this information that's on page 90. And the rates, at the little bottom table, at the very bottom table that's there, if you will look at, like, we'll just pick one of the coverages. The one that's labeled, and I'm sorry, these plans have such weird names, but the one that's labeled AX-XY copay, you see where there's a $23.60 amount there? Okay. At the la, the way that that's determined is by multiplying 5% times the entire amount that it costs to buy that coverage. Well, the last time this, this was presented to you, the calculation was only done on the employee portion of it. So that amount, and I don't remember the exact amount, I think it was like $5 or something in that nature. It was a small amount because the 5% wasn't applied to the $355 that the district also contributes. So we took out the entire premium, and I'm just going to make up a number here, $500, if you will, for the, this particular coverage. And we said, "Okay, the district pays $355 of that, the rest, the employee pays." And the 5% was only applied to the, to the employee portion, and said, "Okay, this is going to be the increase." But that's not true. What happens is you have to take the entire premium amount and apply the 5% to the entire premium because that's what the insurance carrier did. They said it's 5, a 5% across-the-board increase. And it's not just the employee portion you have to do it, it's the entire premium for that coverage. So that's why that amount changed to this. And when we went back to look at it last time, it was like, afterwards, it was like, wait, this is not, there's a problem here. The insurance company said that something's wrong here with these numbers. And we went back to look at them, and it was like, oh, this is what happened. It was only calculated on the employee share of the premium. The district contribution part was left out. That's why the numbers are higher now. And that table still shows you, that bottom table there, shows you for each one of the categories what the employee increase is going to be. And you can see that, you'd have to look a little bit to the very top table, the blue one, under that same coverage, that AX-XY copay, that we have 1,107 employees that buy that particular type of coverage, at least for this year. And so that matches that 23.60 that I mentioned a minute ago. It's that same coverage. So that's the type of increase those employees are going to see. And the next larger group is right beneath that, for 388 employees, that buy that, that other coverage right beneath it. And that one, you can see at the bottom table, that their increase is going to be $20.09. So that's why I said the range is going to be between there for the majority of our employees. There are some employees that are going to pay more. If you look at that whole table down there, you'll see per month what differences are. But there are a lot fewer employees in those other coverages. Some of them have only two employees or one employee buying that particular kind of coverage. Hope that's clear. If not, please ask me some more questions, and I'll actually try to clarify. Yes, ma'am. And the reason this is on here is because we wanted your permission to go ahead and extend the coverage with United Healthcare, who's our current carrier. Our RFP allows us to do that, but we wanted, we, typically, we get to a point where we're like, well, should we bid this? Should we not bid it? And when we looked at everything and we consulted with Alamo, our insurance, and Mr. Looney's here, if you have any questions of him, they felt like, no, you need to go with this. This is the, this is going to be the least price increase that you're going to be able to get for your group. So accepted. But we didn't want to do that without bringing to the board first, and the board saying, you know, it's okay to go ahead. And as I had mentioned before, we did, Ms. Moose, the benefits director, did share this with the finance, with, excuse me, with the insurance committee from, throughout the district. And obviously, even they want as much help as they can get, more premiums, but they understood that we're in a situation, and this, they were okay with us doing this, the majority of them. There was maybe two or three who said, "No, I really don't like to do this," but the rest of them said yes.
And how, how many teachers are on that committee?
I get some help there. Do you know, Tracy, how many are teachers?
We have about, we have about 40 people on the committee. And it's, it's about evenly. We have a, just a very few administrators. And we have like teachers, nurses, counselors, paras. We try to get a, a group from everybody from every school. So it's, it's a very wide range of every employee in the district.
And it's a total of about 40 people?
Yeah, and we, we have about 20 to 30 people that show up on a regular basis to the meetings.
Okay. The, what was the meeting we had the other day when they only had three people show up? Because they got a last-minute notification and concerned insurance.
We had that just to go over this because they didn't see the spreadsheet at all, the first one or the second one. So we just wanted to make sure they had the numbers because we talked about the 5% and they were okay. So we wanted to be very clear. And it wasn't really a meeting. It was if you needed more clarification, you could call or come in. And so I just wanted everybody to make sure they felt good about it. And if they needed to discuss it, they had that open forum to do that.
Was the email, was it at least emailed out to all?
Yeah, it was emailed, and I, and I, since it was so last minute with everybody, I called as many people as I could. And I got, I got pretty much everybody that, a response from everybody that was on the committee that showed up on a regular basis and stuff. So I wanted to make sure we had a, a good response for that.
Okay. So I just want to make sure I understand. This information was given out in two meetings where the majority of the people showed up, but you gave the spreadsheet out the other day?
Yeah, because we didn't create this actual spreadsheet because we were waiting from it from United. And she didn't do it, so we did it instead. We were waiting it from, from it to come from United.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. Motion carries 7-0. We'll move on to item number five, discussion items and reports, review of the 2018, 2019 student dress code. Dr. Montoya.
Again, basically, that, that would have been through Mr. Gonzalez. And I think you're here to, to kind of explain briefly here what that's about.
Yes, good evening. We had a committee of administrators review the dress code. They met three times and went over what was working in the dress code and was, what was not working, and put together their changes. And that's what you see before you. They're very minimal. So that's what you have to look at and to discuss. And if you have any questions about why were certain things changed or added, please ask, and I will do my best to answer.
Mr. LaFoy.
You know, I speak on the dress code every year. This one looks a lot better than normal. But I'll say one thing. It'll only work if it's enforced from day one on. And I'll make all the schools, I'll tell you if it's enforced or not.
Ms. Knoyer. Thank you. I just have a couple of comments on wording.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that the wording you have in one item is not exactly what you intended. It says leggings may be worn with an appropriate top that falls no less than three inches above the knee.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if you say no less than three, that means it could also be four, five, six, seven. So perhaps what you want to say is that falls no higher than three inches above the knee.
Noted, and that will be changed.
No, that's taken off the list. And then on the secondary, I think there's a little bit of repetition with the T-shirts. I think those two items could be combined, where T-shirts that are not deemed offensive, and then you could just combine it with the other bullet that says, "Any T-shirt that is not offensive." And then I see that leggings have been removed from this one as well. Will you put in the same wording that you do for elementary and regarding the top that students wear?
As far as the, the length?
Well, there's nothing at all that addresses tops for students with leggings at the secondary.
Yes, ma'am.
So that, whatever that dot is under bottoms needs to, or, needs to be also included for secondary. Does that make sense?
I'm a little confused, though.
Okay. You have a, you have a caution on elementary about the length of the top when they're wearing, worn with leggings. That does not appear in the secondary dress code.
Yes, ma'am.
And if we're going to say that elementary students must be no shorter than three inches above the knee, then it also needs to happen at secondary.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms., Ms. Eaton. Anyway, I'll leave in leggins along because they need to stay in the store. But I do have one little concern. The, the way the head covering is, is written, I know you're taking notes. Are you done?
No, I'm good, I'm good.
Okay. On, it says no type of head covering?
And, yes, ma'am.
You, you know what I'm going to say, right? So can we like put a little note in there or something?
Religious?
Exactly.
Yes, ma'am.
Please do.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it's on all of them. And I had, I know you explained it to me. Thank you so much, Mr. Garcia. I, I understood exactly what you said, and that makes sense. But since this is going to, you know, be a part of the handbook, right?
Yes, ma'am.
It, it'll be best if we at least had it noted in there, and then we don't have to react to it. We're being proactive.
And we do have some students who would.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. LaFoy.
When will the parents receive this?
As soon as it's adopted.
When they come in to register?
Well, what will happen is it will be placed on the website.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Ah, sir, excuse me.
Because Lance here, that was a big problem.
I'm not too sure.
Well, they kept saying when they come in with the improper clothes. Well, nobody told me. And a lot of them don't look at the website.
Well, it'll be shared with the schools also. So all the schools will have copies of it, of course, and then on the website. And it's not that big of a change. If students were here last year, it's, basically, they'll know what the dress code is. But of course, we'll do our part to try to get it out to everyone.
Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, meeting is adjourned at 7:55.